Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out to the Town of St. John Plan Commission Study Session. Sergio, can I get roll call, please?
Bob Brolson.
Here.
Yolanda Cardona. She appears to be absent. John Gill.
Here.
Donna Little. Thinks that was going to be not here today. Jason Blasick.
Here.
Nancy Woland, I think, is also going to not be here. And John Kennedy.
I am here.
We also have Attorney Adam Decker. Engineer Ken Kraus. And Councilman Liaison Brian Blazek.
President.
All right. Everyone would give me the pleasure of my patience. I have been asked if, due to a conflict issue schedule, if I could rearrange the order, the agenda for today. So, we're going to start with item number D and then proceed to A, B, C, E. I apologize for any inconvenience. It's my cause, but we try to help out where we can. So, with that, item D, Perm Machine and Tool Company, we got Attorney Weiser presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Plan Commission for your accommodation. I do have another meeting to get to as soon as I possibly can. Just real quick background for you, and I know Mr. Kennedy knows because he sits on the BZA. We were before the BZA last month. And we were required, just so you know, Perm Machine is owned by Lee Malazo. He was the first individual and first company that built in the industrial park. Since then, he's added on to his building twice because of the success of his business, which is actually an international business. He needs to add on again to accommodate an expansion in his business. And in order to do that, we needed to appear before the BZA to get a waiver of the side yard and rear yard setbacks. And the BZA granted that, but in doing so, they noted that the building, the proposed footprint of the building was extending into a drainage easement. We did have, and we have provided to the town and to Sergio a release of that, the utility easement from NIPSCO. But there's also a drainage easement, about an eight-foot drainage easement, and it extends into that. So, what we need to do, excuse me, is we're going to, and we've prepared a plat of easement vacation. So, that's sort of the preliminary matter. And I don't, and Sergio had sent me an email yesterday, we don't have the plans yet, any fully developed plans for the building, which we know that we need to provide, and we know that we need to get approval in the site plan process. But we weren't sure what was going to happen before the BZA, and it just seemed like it wouldn't be the brightest use of your funds to go ahead and plan a whole building and then find out for legitimate reasons you can't do what you want to do. So, we haven't, we haven't got that developed yet, but we, so we wanted to just get a sense of what the Plan Commission thought about our approach, and this was discussed with Adam and with Sergio. And this is what we intend to do before the Plan Commission, to get this matter resolved, and then we'll come back to you at a subsequent meeting or hearing, or how soon we can, however soon we can get the plans developed for the actual building and the actual site plan. So, we're really looking at, I was just trying to get a consensus, or maybe some guidance from the Plan Commission and the staff as to if we're on the right, if we're going in the right direction here. And so, I provided the plat of easement vacation to Sergio, and I think, I hope Adam's got a copy of it. And just kind of, that's where we're at right now. Just wanted to let you know that and see if you had any reaction or feedback as a result of it.
And for the benefit of the other board members, from the BZA perspective, the same owner that owns this building owns the property directly to the south.
Right.
He owns that building, so the side yard, rear back, is actually adjacent to his building. We did talk about the size of the building, because our issue really came down with the drainage easement, Ken, and we'll look to rely on you. Why NIPSCO released, gave a release of that drainage easement, we didn't know what kind of effect, positive or negative, it would have to release our rights to that easement. So, we wanted to have the town engineer to review it. And that's why our contingency from the BZA was to have it reviewed by the Plan Commission, which would then be by your expertise. So, that's why it's contingent on that, because at the time, we understand that, you know, the size of the building, the way it is, because of the truck having to back into it, but it's contingent on making sure the drainage easement is, the relinquishment is okay with the town.
I definitely can take a look and see what we have in there. If there's no pipes or swales in that east, easternmost eight feet, I don't see any problem with reducing the easement. This is very similar to that one on White Jasmine, where we're doing the same thing. So, yeah, I'll be glad to take a look and see what's there.
Yeah, we just, the ones, the board didn't want to make that determination without your review of that. So, that's why is our BZA, our approval was contingent on that.
Yeah.
I think we were fine with the side yard setbacks, but the only issue we had was the relinquishment, I think it's what, 15 feet we, it was encroaching?
Maybe 12, I think, something like that.
Maybe 12 in that area. So, we just wanted to have it reviewed by Ken to make sure it didn't have any issues upstream, downstream, and on any other businesses in the area.
I see on one of the drawings that the building corner is 11 and 1/2 feet outside that easement, 20-foot drainage easement. So, I guess my question is, why would you need that easterly eight feet if your building corner's outs, not in that eight-foot or in the 20-foot drainage easement? Why would, why would the business owner need that?
Well, in consultation with the town and the staff, it was determined that that would have to be vacated in order to accommodate it. And, and we wanted to follow their direction from the, that as a result of the, of the BZA. I think you could, you could see it there.
Yeah, the second sheet.
Yeah.
The second sheet shows 11 and 1/2 feet plus or minus off the building corner. That, that was just my only question.
Yeah, and actually, we had had a discussion about that, and because of the need, and John made mention of it before, because that's going to be a warehouse, and that's going to be where truckloads come in and they unload, that's why it's angled the way it is. If it wasn't for that, it wouldn't have to be angled like that. I don't even know that we would need the drainage easement. But to accommodate the, what truck traffic they have when they, when they receive deliveries, it had to be placed that way, had to be located that way.
Brendan has that same question.
Yeah, he did.
And it was just specifically the length of the truck, them coming in to be loaded under roof.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I just, I don't understand, I still don't understand why you need that additional eight feet when the building is clearly outside that easement by 11 and 1/2 feet.
Well, we just need that eight feet vacated.
For what reason?
Utilize.
Mr. Brolson, let me try to clarify this.
Okay.
What you're, I believe, looking at is Exhibit A to the NIPSCO document that was prepared for the legal description for the vacation of the NIPSCO easement.
Okay.
The building depicted on that diagram is not what is being proposed by the...
I didn't know that's what he was looking at.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking at? Yeah, that's not the same one. I'm sorry.
Which one should we look at?
I believe it's the site plan, which is the first exhibit in...
So, everything in yellow is the building, then?
I believe that's correct. Is that correct, Sergio?
That's my understanding. Everything that's highlighted in yellow is where the proposed foundational structure was.
That's it, right there, the site plan. That's correct.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah. So, essentially, as John said, since it was a contingency of the, a contingent, a contingency on the approval from the BZA, we wanted to get this, this initial issue clarified and resolved, so then we could move on to, to site plan approval.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Jason, John, any more questions?
No, I'm good. I see it.
Okay. Jim, I think we'll wait till we hear back from Ken on how his interpretation and opinion is on that.
And that's fine.
Encroachment into the drainage easement, and I think we'll...
Yeah, I was talking to Ken before. He said he'd have that for us tomorrow morning, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
I said I would have it on May 20th, but I didn't specify the year.
Yeah, I know. Well, thanks very much. I appreciate it. We'll be in touch then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for their patience in us flipping that agenda item. So, next on the agenda is Item A, Parish Wood Primary Plat Review. This is for the 27 single-family residential lots on Parish.
Good evening.
Getting any more sleep?
If I'm lucky.
All right.
So, back before you again this evening to discuss a few items related to the Parish Woods development, having been here two weeks ago for the public comment. We did have a number of items that came through that segment of the process, of which the screening effect that we might be able to have on the southern border was brought up, so I figured that might be the easiest thing to knock out here first. We were agreeable to that at the meeting. We have decided if the Commission would agree with us that perhaps the best way to address that would be through the restrictive covenants with specific deed restrictions through the covenants to those lots requiring the screening. The reason we thought that approach might be best is because time and again, we have done plantings at sites, and then at a final grade, the builder's come through and done something that otherwise just took out the plantings or made it to where the plantings could not survive. So, better to have them done at a time for which there's a finished product with the final grade and the home being in place, with the covenants being isolated to articulate that point on those specific lots with parameters. We thought that that would be the best way to approach that, and it would provide the screening that the neighbors to our south were hoping and asking for. I suppose before I go on to the next item, if there's any thoughts on that?
Ryan, in that, the wetlands in that area to the south of your property, is that self-contained wetlands, or does it drain to any regulated ditch?
That's a good question. I would have to talk to the wetlands engineer that we, or, excuse me, what was professional we had do the delineation to find out one way or the other. I am not an expert in that. I just listen to what he tells me, and I've always taken the adage that if it's wetlands, I stay away from it, because I do not want that coming down upon me.
Well, I don't know if you're aware, the state has made some regulatory changes to the classification of a wetland, and if it's self-contained, it could be farmed, developed?
Correct. It's possible, and we're still getting very, very significant mixed messages back, because IDEM and the legislation, or those that passed the legislation were not necessarily on the same page when they did it. So, now both are kind of looking at each other as far as to how it actually works. It's been written, it's been put into place, but no one knows how it's supposed to work, although it's supposed to go into effect, I guess, July 1.
That is correct.
So, again, I defer to those that know more about it, to be able to tell me if I can do anything or I can't do anything.
Okay. Mr. President, I just want to make two points real quick. One is that you do have Plan Commission member Yolanda Cardona online now, so there's another person for voting. And then, the other thing is, and maybe Adam can weigh in on this if necessary, with regards to, we did receive three additional public comments. I indicated to these individuals that it would be at the, at the discretion of the Board if they'd want to hear them after the closing of the public hearing, so not sure what...
Well, since we don't do any, take any action today, we'll make that determination at the next regularly scheduled meeting, Adam? Would that be appropriate?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Okay. Ken, is there any way we can determine the classification of that wetland? Is there anyone that...
Well, I think we have to depend on his expert to work with the Army Corps. The Army Corps will take a look at their delineation and classification and approve or not approve it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So, then, moving on, the other topic of discussion from the previous Plan Commission meeting was relative to an eight-foot sidewalk. We did submit a proposed concept to Sergio for discussion tonight, and hopefully he can bring that up if you don't already have it in your packet. So, exhibited in blue is the proposed direction of the eight-foot sidewalk. With this being isolated from the rest of St. John relative, and to that matter, to the south is unincorporated, there's no sub, no, excuse me, sidewalk to the north, we are proposing that the eight-foot carry-through on Atherton and then return to Parish so as to provide that accessibility for the subdivision, since this, this would be their major way of getting to the, to and fro, from those different points. It would also reduce some of the redundancy of sidewalk along Parish as well as Atherton. And then, we would stub at the end of our property respectively to the north and to the south. One item that we did work with a little bit was because our initial proposed location of the lift station at the southwest corner of Outlot 1 actually forced us to put that eight-foot sidewalk pretty much hugging, or I shouldn't say pretty much, it was hugging the curb. Having been here for the last meeting and heard some discussion on another matter relating to the placement of a sidewalk relative to the street or curb, we thought it best to try to bring that lift station further to the, the north to be able to avoid cramping it or making it hug the curb in that acceleration lane, thus giving us more separation between traffic and people that would be walking or utilizing the pedestrian walkway of the eight-foot. So, otherwise, we would have to push that eight-foot closer to, and in some cases, being directly on the driving surface or on the curb, that is. So, those would be the two comments that I would make regarding our design, and would certainly like to get any input or feedback from the Commission.
So, Ryan, where, where does the eight-foot path squeeze?
It would.
That at Lot 18 and Lot, Outlot 1?
Lot, Outlot 1, it was. We were able to mitigate that. It was being squeezed against the curb because of the initial placement of the lift station or Outlot 29.
Gotcha.
We've shifted that further to the north to be able to not have that, that pinning against the curb there that we would otherwise have had. So, it's not reflected in this drawing. This is the drawing to show how we've, would have corrected it.
The Outlot 29, as shown on this exhibit, is different than the engineering drawings.
That is correct.
And the reason it got changed previously was we didn't want a driveway coming out onto Parish to the lift station.
And, and I, we heard those comments, certainly did, but when I was sitting here at the last meeting, and they were trying to do anything to get the, off the curb for safety purposes, we thought it best to try to illustrate it in such a way that we were taking pedestrian safety into account as well.
I mean, obviously, the traffic into that lift station isn't going to be heavy at all, maybe once a day, but, you know, it is going to be coming onto a busy road.
We have, or you should say Randy drew it out to be able to have a hammerhead or a three-point turn access to where you wouldn't be necessarily having the public works backing out onto Parish. You'd be able to make a point turn and access by making a front entry.
That would be a plus.
So, that is illustrated there.
Questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, this is John. I have a question on the, the right-of-way. I know they, they were talking about the traffic at the last meeting, and I just want to make sure that when they do the, they dedicate the right-of-way or even improve the road, is there a way they can future-proof that for if we ever have to widen Parish to get to 231 for additional turning lanes, which I can see coming in the near future?
Can you repeat that again, John? I apologize.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, I see they, they have like their XL and Dcel, but I know a lot of the residents were concerned with the traffic.
Correct.
And so, I don't know if it'd be prudent to have them just widen Parish along their frontage, fulfill another lane, you know, in preparation for the intersection to the north being improved and having multiple lanes and stuff, rather than having them do all the curb work along Parish, and then we have to come back and tear it out in two years when we widen Parish.
That would be a consideration that Ryan would need to take under, under advisement, but that's a good suggestion, John.
So, Johnny, looking for additional right-of-way or just additional pavement width?
I think both. I mean, I think we should at least get the right-of-way if, if we need to do it in the future, that would make, because I know we made like the preserves and stuff, give us right-of-way for White Oak if we ever want to widen White Oak. But now, if, if he's doing curbing along there and stuff, it seems like, you know, sooner rather than later, we're going to have to do something with the, the turn lanes at Parish and 231, and I know 231's a state road, so that's up to them to do. But I think we would be on the hook for doing our north-south on Parish if we were going to do like a, a left-straight-right lane. So, I know we'd have to like get right-of-way from Mill Creek and stuff to do that, but if they could just knock it out in one swoop rather than us redoing something a few years down the road, I think that'd be a little better.
What's the right-of-way width north of this subdivision? Do you know, Sergio? Or John, do you know?
I'm not 100% sure off the top of my head.
We match.
You match?
We match.
Well, I mean, it's logical, based on all the comments we received from the residents in that area about the traffic on Parish to potentially start to address the traffic issues on Parish. Going to the sidewalk, I would, I mean, you're going to have to have, you're almost substituting a pedestrian sidewalk for a trail for those lots, while I understand it's close to the curb and you just, you know, you try to have some sort of buffer between car and pedestrian. But I just think having that gap, we should just have it, the connectivity north and south along Parish.
To a point, is if we do, or if we are asked to widen Parish or provide more pavement, that is, we will start to get into a position where that eight-foot is starting to hug the curb as well, not, not more observational than anything.
Understand, understand.
Because we do marry up with the right-of-way that was provided by Mill Creek, so it's not as though we're staggering in or out with the, the dedicated right-of-way, but to the question of pavement and placement of curb, then if we start pulling that curb further to the east relative, at that point in time, we start to hug that right-of-way tight, and we're starting to look at the curb and the sidewalk being closer and closer together.
I mean, I know probably not ideal, but it's better than the situation we currently have where there's no sidewalk. So, trying to engineer it the best we can is better than what's currently out there. I think that's the approach we have to take as we're looking at pedestrian safety. It's better to put them on a sidewalk while I know it's closer to the street.
Oh, I, no.
We're both on the same wavelength, but I just want, I think we need to have some sort of understanding, because this is a waiver that you will require, so I think you probably want to walk away with some sort of understanding if this approach is more preferable, what you're showing now, versus having the maximum width sidewalk along Parish. So, I don't know what the rest of the board has to say.
Now, I would agree with you, John, that the sidewalk needs to connect, not loop through the subdivision. It needs to be on Parish all the way up from the south property line to the north property line.
I just think you would...
In the Parish right-of-way.
You would prefer to have that clarification now than in a couple more weeks, so I'm just trying to, and I don't know, or Jason, or Yolanda, or John, you feel about that?
No, I agree. I think you need the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the average person walking down Parish is going to think to dive into the subdivision and pop back out to, they're just going to keep right on, going south or north and be on the road.
I agree. I mean, I'm sure it's going to be a scenic route to take, for sure. Those houses, I'm sure, are going to be very nice, but I don't think that people intend, you know, to go into the subdivision to just get to Parish.
No, it looks like they'll just wear a trail straight down the side of Parish here.
Right.
So, Ryan, we appreciate why you attempted to do this. I think any waiver requests for a sidewalk will probably...
I appreciate that. Again, we know there's no sidewalk to the south or north of us, so we thought if there's going to be eight, eight feet, maybe it should benefit the neighborhood for being able, you know...
We understand that this board is trying to get as much sidewalk as we can when these developments come in. We know there's a lot that hasn't been put in, but we're just trying to get in as much as we can, because someday, there will be. Just when will that happen? Who knows?
All right. To consideration to the placement of the lift station, to be able to get that eight-foot further off of the curb. We're just trying to mitigate that, because it was really tight. That was my first comment when I saw it, because it just, it was right there, and it was fresh in my mind from the meeting where you address it for another party. And in this case, since we have a blank palette, we're not working around something existing, trying to put a sidewalk in, we thought it best to, if we could, keep it further off of the curb to do that.
Ken, I know it's not ideal, but could they use, if it's only going to be, I don't know how sturdy these multi-use paths are. I think it has to be concrete, based on our ordinance, correct?
Yeah, our ordinance requests eight-foot concrete.
And I don't know if our department would want to even drive on those to access the lift station. I mean, I would prefer not to have a driveway off of Parish. You know how I feel about conflict points along heavily trafficked areas, but I'm just trying to mitigate that drive, but I don't know if there's...
Well, I think wherever the driveway goes, if it crosses any sidewalk, the sidewalk should be thickened.
Right.
But I'm just saying, is there maybe another access point that the truck, I don't know what kind of truck they even use to go...
It's usually a pickup, unless they're doing maintenance and have to replace pumps and stuff like that.
Usually, usually you thicken the sidewalk like Ken said.
No, I'm just, but you don't want to put a truck on a pedestrian pathway. I'm just thinking, could they come off of Atherton Street to get to the lift sta, uh...
Oh, you mean drive on the path?
Yeah, but then you got, then you got a whole pedestrian issue, so I, stupid idea, I'm sorry. So, I'm just trying to minimize any...
Hopefully, the public work guys won't even think about that.
So, all right. I mean, trying to minimize the drive off of Parish would always be beneficial, but, you know, I...
Yeah, the engineering plans have it at the, the south corner along that pathway with the driveway onto Atherton. I was happy with that.
So, I don't know if that's a option you can put...
We could go back to it. Again, it forced us to put the, the sidewalk right on the curb at that point in time, and that's an acceleration lane, so people will be coming around the corner, and we just thought if, if we could keep traffic and people further apart, that's probably the better.
Understand. What do you guys think? You like that better, though, Ken?
I like not having a driveway onto Parish.
I agree. Okay. Why don't we look?
Yeah, I would agree too.
Since it's minimum use once a day, hopefully. Since the, that driveway would only be minimum use, hopefully we wouldn't have many issues there. By our, by our... use, hopefully we wouldn't have many issues there by our trucks, by the town's trucks.
On, for access from Parish or access from Atherton? I'm sorry.
Atherton.
Well, I'm not worried about the one truck a day. I'm worried about the acceleration lane there where people will be making the right-hand turn, and the curb, the curb and the sidewalk are right on top of each other there. Because, I mean, it literally hugged that whole, that whole angled line there for the acceleration. That's why we pulled it back.
Yeah. It looks, looking at your contours and the pond and to the east of the right-of-way line, looks like the same area as the northwest corner as the southwest corner.
Oh, here it is.
On sheet, whatever, sheet one of one.
If you look-
Looks like you have the same room.
And if you look at sheet four of 39, they have the outlot on the south, south side of Outlot One.
Yeah, southwest corner.
Southwest corner.
Yeah.
I can bring an exhibit that shows, I don't have a contrast right now. Unfortunately, I should have had him include a contrast, so not only am I describing it, you would have had a visualization of what I'm describing. I can bring that to the next meeting for us to make a decision based upon you seeing it and seeing it opposed to just seeing it one way.
Thank you, sir.
I'm indifferent. Again, we just, there was a lot of discussion about keeping sidewalks off of curbs, so.
No, we, right now, we have no curb or sidewalks there at all, so curb-off sidewalk is a little bit better than no curb or no sidewalk, so.
Other than that, were there other points of consideration so that hopefully by the time we see each other in June, we might be able to have some actionable plan?
The only other waiver is connectivity to another undeveloped parcel. Is that correct? Sergio?
Yes.
So, you have a waiver for sidewalk, and I know we've talked about another stub connectivity to this, which would be the south, because that was the only other area that's undeveloped right now, even though it's a cow farm. I don't know if any of the board had any comments or questions regarding that waiver. That would be required by the plant commission to allow him not to put in a, some sort of a stub, which would, I would imagine, be around lot 16 or one of those lots to the dairy farm to the south.
And if I might clarify, I don't believe we're asking for a waiver on the sidewalk. I think we're working towards figuring out how to put the sidewalk in.
That's correct.
So, I think the only waiver period that we're looking at regards that connectivity, and part of that is just we're a 20-acre parcel that's surrounded on two sides by a subdivision that doesn't have access to us, and then a dairy farm to the south of us where the owners were quite emphatic that they will never be moving, so that was another consideration, aside from the fact that goes into a wetland, to which we are rather vaporous on whether or not we can do anything about it at this point in time, and people that get paid more than me know what to do there.
Is there wetland? Do you know, is there wetland to the south of you, south of your property on the south?
I can't speak to that. Our delineation was only for the boundary, within the boundaries of our property.
And did you have wetlands on the entire south property or just lots 16 and?
I believe it was 16, 15, and 14, because they were abnormally shaped.
Okay.
And some were, one was quite small, but yet had a gap between it and another, but the gap was maybe all of five feet.
So, I don't know what the subdivision to the north, they actually have a stub to the rear, to the rear of the-
Daisy Lane?
Yeah, to the rear of the dairy farm. It looks like it almost splits property line if I'm looking at the property. That's been a soapbox issue of me with connectivity to other developments. While I understand he has some valid points, the dairy farm owners did come in, said they will never move. I appreciate that, but you know, never is a very big term to use, and-
It's a long time.
It's a long time, and I always think our responsibility is look past the future and, you know, what the next generation has to feel. We've done it into private property and other subdivisions, why every application is unique in its own self. At this time, I understand it's a wetland. We haven't determined with the new state regulation if it could be dried or taken out of commission. It would be nice maybe to know that clarification. If it can be, then it wouldn't be as much, I would say, a hardship. Why, I don't know the costs and figures of putting in a stub or a road. I can't say what that hardship is, but I just think to have that connectivity, it would be important on a road that is specifically talked by the residents as very highly trafficked, and so having other access points along that road wouldn't be, wouldn't be, you know, would be a benefit to the community, I believe. So, at this time, unless otherwise determine that wetland can, has to stay, which then would, I think, would be a hardship for the developer. You know, it just, I think that connectivity is important, but it's a board decision. Which then would change his plat, so he would have to come back in.
We're a little bit pot-committed at this point in time, because we moved with the rules that we knew at the time for which we were designing and starting this process. Obviously, if they change, they change, but we're awfully close to being at a point where we're satisfying every contention that could possibly be had except for this question of the waiver.
And I understand you were, you had more important things today. You had Representative here, and he did talk about the wetlands in that area and the connectivity and the waiver, and why you wouldn't consider putting that stub in there, but it was, we really never, that was our, you know, first time hearing about the request for waiver, and so we didn't discuss it much at that time, but as we, I look at it and understanding the state's new rules, and I am not aware of any drainage, regulated drain in that area, which would make that a self-contained wetland that potentially could be dried. So... But again, it's a board decision, and I'm just giving my two cents. So, if there's no other questions or comments for Ryan, we could let him, we have a public hearing on-
The second or the third?
June 2nd.
June 2nd. Then we will, at that time, we can't, we don't make any actions at the study session, so at that time, we will, the first action we'll take after the hearing is we will go through the only waiver, which would be that stub, and then I think at that time, I don't think Sergio, am I missing anything that we need to discuss tonight? So, he is prepared for?
The only things I had in mind were the sidewalk waiver and the road stub waiver, and then whatever was in the email with regards to the acquisition of additional right-of-way or improvements of infrastructure, so.
The right-of-way and the road structure that John Gill brought up. Any consideration for that?
Certainly.
And you don't have to answer that now.
No, but to be clear, I just want to understand what, how, we're looking for extra pavement? Is that, is that, because the right-of-way matches the right-of-way for what's at Mill Creek. So, are we looking for more right-of-way, which we stagger further back than Mill Creek? Or are we just looking for extra pavement, and if that is extra pavement, what are we looking for, for a width?
Johnny, John, the point that you brought up, are you just looking for extra width?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to get with Ken or somebody and see what we would need in the future and kind of go from there.
So, then, Ken, if you could-
Well, I wouldn't want to put in an extra lane that would maybe have some people think that they could drive on it, and then it doesn't go anywhere, and now they got to merge back into the lane that they were in before. That could be more dangerous than not having it. It would be great if we could put in left-turn lanes for both of these intersections off of Parish, but like John says, there's not enough room to put those in with the right-of-way that we have. So, in order to get everything, there would have to be more right-of-way and not necessarily more pavement.
But then, like he's saying, with Mill Creek to the north, that right-of-way is not, so we would be-
They, and like Ryan said, they did match the right-of-way for Mill Creek at 40 feet on this half of the right-of-way, which I would have done myself. But if we're concerned about future drivability, you know, to keep the traffic going while somebody's trying to make a left turn, and you don't want somebody to be stuck behind him while he waits, we would actually need more right-of-way on the other side of the street, you know, because there's only 20 feet on the other side of the street.
Reading the comments that was presented to us, it sounds like a lot of folks drive awfully fast down that road, and maybe that'd be a good thing, that they have to wait for someone to turn into this subdivision.
That's actually a good point.
And a point that was made about putting sidewalk in only to have five years from now the possibility of it being pulled out, we've done with other municipalities where we've just given the funds for this, that what we would have done to put the curb in so that in five years, if you want to put it in a better spot, you can. We're not opposed to that either. If you want it in, we'll put it in. If you want us to provide a cash, a cash allowance for that to the municipality, we're not, six one-way, half a dozen the other to us.
And that was brought up, Adam, that was brought up at one of our other meetings, and I don't think we have, discussed a couple months ago, exact same thing, but I don't think we have a mechanism in place to allow that currently, which is not a bad idea, is something we have to work on, but, okay.
Yeah, I mean, really, a traffic engineer should study this and decide, do we need two lanes going north or two lanes going south? Do we need a left-turn lane? We already have the Dcel and XL lanes, which is great. That's what happens on the north side of 231, but there's also left-turn lanes north of 231 on Parish. They were just put in by the town a few years ago.
Because I know Indot has gone out to bids for the design of Parish in 231, incline in 231, so those are going to be designed.
Yeah.
For the intersection?
For the intersection. So, those are in the process of being designed and probably built in the next year or two.
But not anything farther south.
They're dedicating a 40-foot.
No, does that, does that the intersection? It's the intersection improvements for those two.
Yeah, they'll just go as far south as they need to to get their lanes.
For the drives, yeah.
For the turn lengths.
Correct. So, I'm not sure if they dedicate an additional 10 feet that has been recorded, but I'm not sure.
Well, Ryan, if we could just ask you, or Ken, just review it. You heard what John comments were. A lot of the residents did talk about the traffic issue, and I agree with Bob. It's probably a speed issue, so having them slow down is not a bad issue, but if there's a safe traffic way to, you know, work our way into more pavement, maybe, I don't know. I'll leave that up to the experts.
I'm not sure more pavement is the solution, though.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think maybe I'm just more concerned with the right-of-way too, because I mean, you know, not to throw stones at any of the previous boards, but you know, we kind of started the trend of thinking to the future of sidewalks and everything like that, and then I think, you know, right up there with the sidewalks is the right-of-way rather than us having to knock on the five or six residence doors and say, hey, can we have some right-of-way from your land? If we can get it now, you know, we might as well get what we might need in the future, and, you know, just matching Mill Creek evenly, you know, I don't know that that was thought about with Mill Creek.
Yeah, and again, you tailor the right-of-way for what you believe the future configuration of the road is going to be. If one lane is fine with a left-turn lane and acceleration and Dcel lanes is good enough, then the 40 feet on Parish Woods side is plenty of right-of-way to put that in. But if you're going to actually build that, you're going to need more like 80, 80 feet of right-of-way, and you don't have that right now. You've got 60 feet, 20 on the west side of the road and 40 eventually when he plats his property on the east side. So, I mean, I-
And realistically, it needs-
Really think a traffic expert should be taking a look at that.
But based on a timing issue, he's about to go, you know, for approval here in a month.
What's that road consider? Collector, Arturo?
It's minor arterial.
What's the right-of-way maximum?
80-foot right-of-way.
80-foot.
Yeah, 40 on each side.
40 on either side from center line.
So, 10 feet short on the side.
Part of the problem with-
No, we have 40.
I'm that way almost every day, and I don't think it's really a speed issue. You just can't get down the road. I mean, it's bumper to bumper to bumper to bumper. There's just no way for people to get around, and then if they, if 231 gets done, now we're funneling everybody down this tiny little road again. There's just no space.
If there's improvement at the intersection, would that help for turn lanes and?
It would at the intersection until they start going south, and everybody's-
I think it's going to be a roundabout.
I just want to advise the board real quick. We did look into the ordinance. It is actually 90-foot right-of-way for minor arterial.
So, is there enough right-of-way then shown on this?
What was proposed looks like a 40-foot right-of-way, so we would need additional five feet right-of-way to meet the ordinance.
We simply matched what was at Mill Creek.
Yeah. Okay. So, then the site plan he has now needs additional five feet of right-of-way.
That or a waiver.
Yeah, we might start having issues with lot 28, respectively 28 through 26 or 21 through 19, in particular, at that, if we start losing some linear footage there to where we don't meet the R1 minimums.
And Ryan, this is just my opinion. I'd rather see you go, gentlemen, this is my opinion, and lady, I'm sorry, Yolanda, I'd rather see the lot sizes five feet smaller and get more roadway.
If I can get that-
And wave on a couple lots, maybe.
Wave on a couple, and I don't know if we can do that, Sergio, or Adam, or Ken. I'd rather see lot sizes 95 feet and get extra for roadway, because I think people are more concerned about traffic than a lot size being 100 feet versus 95 feet, so.
I'm just trying to-
No, no, and I'm just letting you know what I would, I would be, feel more comfortable with. I'd rather see a wider roadway and then, because I'm trying to work with what you have.
That's the pleasure of the board, and as far as I'm concerned, if I'm keeping you happy on the lot sizes, and if I'm keeping you happy on the right-of-way, I'm winning at that point in time.
I just know, it seems like Parish is a very congested roadway from the neighborhood we heard, and what Jason has seen personally, I think reducing lots by five feet here and there to get us the 45 feet we require for that extra pavement, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, and if it's a case of where we would reduce one or defer it across three to where it's not as a large of an impact on one lot, and it's a minor impact upon three lots, let's say, we're agreeable to that to get you the extra five feet of the right-of-way, if that makes any sense.
Buddy.
Jason, Yolanda, John, what do you guys think about that?
I think it's a good trade-off.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, we're happy to do that then, okay.
You probably also have to get a waiver for the 20% wider corner lots.
Yes.
Along with the reduction of the square footage.
No, no, I don't want to get too much in the weeds here. Would we want to keep those corner lots larger just because of sure turning and then have the interior ones smaller? Maybe that's a, Ken, you could, I don't know if that would be more advisable to have that corner lot kept that size, and you read, we just got to work that out. That's a detail that-
Lot 17 could be-
I don't know. Can you tell me?
95 and keep lot 18 the same and 28.
I don't know. If you're on a corner lot, maybe you want more distance. I don't know. That's, but yeah, I think we're all on the same page. Let's try to get that five additional feet, squeeze it from other areas.
Yeah, maybe lot two, lot 27, 20, and 17.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Oh, he's just doing the internal ones, so.
The internal ones, lot two.
Three to the far north side, like 27 and 26 on the north side.
Yeah, I'll have the engineer look into what the impact is. It's very possible that on our perimeter, so lot two relatively and 17 respectively, they may not be as hard of a problem, because I have more room to move to the, or to pull from the east, whereas the blocks of 26 through 28 and 21 through 19, those are restricted as far, and I do believe that one of them we had to play with a little bit to meet that minimum as it was. That's, those are a little tighter. I know that for a fact. So, I will work with Randy from, Randy Peterson from Aben March to work on that detail, to bring back for the June 2nd meeting to give that extra five feet of right-of-way. We would not be seeking at this point in time then the waiver for the sidewalk. The only waiver then in consideration still is the possibility of the, regarding the stubbing of the right-of-way relative to a degree of hardship or just in general how it works for the design.
And then would there be a waiver for lot sizes, since some of those, we would just do a waiver for lot sizes with an understanding- And then would there be a waiver for lot sizes, since some of those, we would just do a waiver for lot sizes with an understanding that we're, as long as we get
I don't know what those waivers might be at this time, but we can work with staff to bring it back, and so as that the it meets the staff's opinion of being a good thing, and then at the favor of the Plan Commission, at that point in time, we'll make that determination.
Okay. That's a great point. Is 45 comfortable? I mean, would we be able
For me, it is.
Well, then with now, with the extra right of way, do we want to talk about, no, you still wouldn't consider pavement. Okay, very good. All right, any other questions, comments? Sergio, Adam, Ken, Brian, am I missing anything?
Mr. Chair, if, I believe the R1 standard is 100 foot width for lots. And so depending on what he comes back with, if it goes under 100, then that would require a developmental variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals, so.
Okay.
And that's permitted, but it's for corner lots, it can't be less than 80 feet, but it's taken from the zoning.
The 100 foot width?
100 foot is the minimum width.
Would require a BZA variance.
If it goes below 100, right, Board of Zoning Appeals may approve a developmental variance allowing a lot width of less than 100 feet, but not less than 80 feet.
Okay.
And that's why I suggested don't change the corner lots, change the ones east of that.
But if they're, but if they're minimum 100 right now, anything lower than that, he'll have to go to the BZA.
Yeah.
Yeah, but right now, lot 27 is 116
Yeah.
feet and lot 20 is 107. So if you lost five feet from both of those, it'd still be more than 100.
Yeah, yeah, that's why he, he
He's just advising you.
Oh, yeah, we we don't want to go to the, have to do another board meeting if we don't have to, but we definitely wanted to
Come on, you get to see me again. Come on the BZA, too.
You know, I I really don't mind that, but my wife is pretty upset with me right now.
You got a little one at home. You got a little one at home. All right, so you, uh, do you, are you clear with how with the BZA requirements, so you could try to avoid that?
Yes, and we will work with staff to to navigate that field.
Great. Adam, thank you for pointing that out.
Yep.
With that?
With that, anyone going, going? All right, enjoy.
Thank you so much.
No, no, get out. Hey, Deck, how are you, sir? Next on the agenda, we got St. John Commons. We have Nick Georgiou in front of us. Nick, how are you, sir?
Good evening.
Evening.
Thanks, thanks.
Well, that was good. That was a good idea, in that extra right of way.
Yeah.
How are you, sir? Good.
Mr. Chair, just a reminder to ask all speakers to identify themselves before they before they make any presentation.
Nick, if you would do me a favor, if you would present yourself for the record.
Yes, Nick Georgiou, Sumac Architects, Griffith, Indiana, representing Summer Winds Commercial. We have also in the, in attendance this evening, Brad Lambert of Summer Winds Commercial, Doug Reddick from DBG Team, and Greg Bauer, counsel for the proposed purchaser, which is Summer Winds Commercial. This is our, our third presentation to the Plan Commission and Study Session. If Sergio will actually pull up the master plan, there were three, I'll do a brief overview, but there were three primary items that were discussed at the last study session that we were asked to come back and provide additional information for. But in the, it'd be the next page, Sergio. That unfortunately is the older one. I have to apologize. I did upgrade the master plan this afternoon because I realized one of the items that was discussed that we had provided. So if you look at second page of the handout that I gave you, but the two items that we added, there was a request, I'll go back, let me give you the overview for those of us who who may not have remembered. This property is about 20 acres. We're seeking a PUD. The west side of Calumet is own commercial. On the north side of the property, half of it's own C2 to the northwest. To the northeast, it's R2. To the east, it's R2, and to the south, it's R3. We have significant utility easement and some difficult areas to deal with on the south. We're proposing that other than the green space on the easement, that we also extend the bike trail and have a park area, trailhead extension, and that we stub the existing road from the south into a dead-end cul-de-sac. What we propose overall in the project is actually sort of a transitional multi-use PUD with commercial retail, which would abut the commercial properties that are on the west and to the north. Transition piece as you move east, which is accessible from Calumet, which would be a professional office residential live-work type component. And then to the east, a residential piece that abuts the existing residential areas to the north and east at that area location. But in the last session, we asked, we were asked to provide a connectivity to to facilitate inter-project connections. We have a future street connection shown to the north off of the retail drive, which would then align theoretically with the C2 development that would happen to the north. We actually redid the bikeway pathway from the residential component. Originally, it was shown going to the south to the bike path. There was a discussion about the residential component being able to walk bike over to the retail component. And so we reconfigured where that particular bike pathway, pedestrian pathway goes from the southwest corner of the residential component over into the commercial area. The other consideration, which is what we literally upgraded today and added, which is not shown, oh, it is up there, so thank you. It is the latest, but as we provided buffering and birmingham and landscaping between the residential component we have against the existing residential to the north and east. So from a site plan presentation or or questions that were raised, those were from my notes where you wanted us to address, which hopefully we have. And the other two components, then you asked us to provide additional detail and some design specific to, in the last presentation, we gave you like three different options on the live-work schematic of a potential design. We did not indicate any residential design for the townhomes. We are now presenting, well, I guess we can take it by by segments, so the retail, I didn't seem to get any you know, the owner of the, proposed owner of the project is also the current owner and developer of the Summer Winds retail plaza in Cedar Lake, and we've used that as a basis, which is a all masonry and stone high-end. I consider it a very high-end retail-type development. We're still presenting that as a proposed option for this retail component. On the office, the professional office residential component, we've now provided, and I guess if I walked through that. Actually, yeah, this is the scheme they actually, we've now embellished or now we've we've expanded on because you asked us to, you know, give us a more expanded proposed presentation for the design retail of the live-work component. This is the scheme which, that we left in and the one we've now expanded upon. So if you go to the next page, Sergio. This is a expanded rendering, showing materials, a concept for the the live-work component. Again, the intent was that the lower level first floor would be professional office space that theoretically could be bought and used literally by the resident above, but is not dedicated necessarily to that. There could be other professional office uses relative to that. In our proposed design, we actually have a two-story and a one-story residential component above the office space. This is an all masonry project or proposed project, at least with the materials that we're providing. So we've expanded on it. The residential component has balcony components relative to whether it's a one-story or two-story unit.
What CMU?
Concrete masonry unit. This would be a decorative, not a concrete block type thing. It'd be a decorative concrete masonry unit. Either white or, well, we're showing a white and a gray component relative to the proposed materials on this one in particular. If you want to flip to the floor plan, we created at least a block floor plan both for the first floor and the second floor of the live-work component. So you can get a little better feel of of the offices. Being those front towards the commercial retail side, and the entrances to the residential units are on the backside of the east side. So we did create segregation of the entries of those two, although if you reference back to the overall master plan, there is circulation around the entire building, but the residential accesses to the east and the commercial offices to the west. This floor plan depicts half of it. It's a symmetrical presentation. On the backside, there literally is a two-car garage for each residential unit, access to a vertical access front door, but then you're going upstairs. And if you flip to the next page, again, we just blocked out the the units. I do want to, I just for your reference, because this has always been presented as above average or more of an upscale development, the live-work component, the average office spaces, at least in the, it can be combined, is about 1,120 square feet. The first floor unit of the of the residential component, the average space is almost 1,900 square feet. So you have some significant living space required. If it's a two-story unit, you're getting to into a significant residential unit in terms of square footage. So I just want to, it's not 800 square feet or a tiny space, et cetera. We're looking at some very nice residential units. We, in the, in the block floor plan or the residential and the live-work, we assume the two-story unit would probably be a four-bedroom unit. The lower, the single ones would probably be a three-bedroom unit, but that mix and et cetera is not something we've developed to that level of detail. I can continue to the townhomes, the residential, or do you want, do you have, do you want me to go through the whole thing first, or what do you want to do?
Go through the whole thing, whatever.
Well, let's go through the whole thing, and then maybe we'll take it piece by piece for the boards
Sure.
to discuss.
Like I said, we we continue to include the the retail component that was similar to the Cedar Lake Retail Center, and we're still proposing that concept essentially. You asked us to come back with some proposed residential elevation or design rendering. This is, we had multiple schemes we discussed with the owner. This is the one we're presenting this evening. The intent is, it's mostly, it is masonry, two-car garage for each unit. There is some siding component relative to it. But we think we're, it sort of leans to more of a craftsman style is what we're looking at in terms of the the style and the deliverable for the residential townhome units, incorporating some nice features of like standing seam metal roof. You know, some nice trim features, putting a little emphasis or design on the garage doors even, because you know, just trying to get everything to enhance the overall appearance and what we were proposed to provide. There is a floor plan on the following page, and this was more of a fitting a modular. This is no way intended to say this is the exact floor plan, so want to emphasize that particular point. But it fits the module. We we did the entire layout of the townhome units on a 28-foot module. That's 28, 29 feet is pretty standard. Lake Hills townhomes are 29 feet, I believe. But we're right in that module. We haven't, this is, this is a first pass, first rendering. Again, we also think the target market is going to be older individuals looking for an upscale, maintenance-free environment. These particular, also on the, you know, the point we, I picked out is that these are main floor master bedroom units. These are two-story units. Eventually, this could, that could vary, but this is the first pass and first presentation to Plan Commission of what we would propose to have on the residential townhome components. And as I said, in the overall master plan or the the site layout, we added significant landscaping and buffering and birmingham around the perimeter of the of this particular component. The roadways that circulate through the townhome unit do meet the 60-foot standard right of way, standard roadways. These are not below standard, so we'd be meeting the subdivision standard for the roadways that come through this particular residential aspect. And obviously, the entrance to this, or this residential component comes from the existing road that's stubbed from the north and that's dead ends currently on the property line on this particular entity. That's sort of the overview of what we've provided and additional information, and we obviously are very open to your comments and questions.
Thank you, Nick. All right, for, just maybe for some sort of ease of going through this, again, this is a PUD that will be a recommendation from the Plan Commission. As Nick has advised, they have been here three times, so I think at this time, we either need to start either this is something we want to proceed forward with, why they have and so if if this is something we feel comfortable getting deeper into the weeds, I'll say, Nick, with some of the architectural details, or if this is something that's just not in our wheel well, I think it's sometime we got to let them know that this is not going to be recommended by us. And again, the city town council can make any decision whether for or against our recommendation. But I just think at this time, if we want to start taking it in pieces, maybe start with the commercial live-work section, see if that's something that we is palatable to us, something that we can work with and get into more nitty-gritty details. Is that an appropriate approach for you, Nick? Like Sergio, is that good for you?
I do want to add one comment, and if Greg wants to stand up and reiterate what he stated at the last meeting. In a PUD, there's a lot of details and 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 determination that is negotiated that is ultimately ends up in the PUD. I mean, this is first pass at a design, and and for it to evolve is normally, is a process that normally happens. I mean, if you said, hey, we love it, we'll take it as is, I'd say, okay, great, but I fully expect that's not going to be the case. But in PUD, you get to, we we will negotiate the landscaping, the lighting, the final design, that'll all be part of the approval package that would be subject to negotiation with the Plan Commission and and staff, et cetera. And so I just want to add that comment, so this is not like, we're, we're, actually, as John said, we do, would like some feedback as conceptually is something we we feel we can go forward with.
So let's take it, and if no one has any, let's take the commercial side first. We'll go from west to east and and discuss. So any initial comments with the commercial and the live-work area?
For me, I don't have a problem with the retail and the live-work units. But I do have concern about the trailhead, the street that comes into the cul-de-sac at the trailhead parking not having that continued up to this retail, this street to the south, whatever that name of that street is.
Red Rock Place.
What was that, John?
It's Red Rock Place.
Red Rock Place. It's not a frontage road, but then it almost seems like a frontage road, and I'm all about having frontage road, you know, work its way up along a kind of a major road so that residents could have access to this retail that's south of this development, instead of going out on Calumet Avenue and coming back in. Does it have to be curb and gutter? Do we have to have that cul-de-sac there? Does the, you know, can we just? Maybe it's just a you know, just a pavement with maybe a concrete edge to hold the pavement edge, you know? Don't have to have inlets, you know, just have it extend up to that commercial area, and that's, I think that's, I think it's important to have. Maybe the residents will come in and say, no, you're nuts. We don't want that connectivity, but I think it needs to go in. That's what I have for
Okay, no. Jason, John, Yolanda, any comments, feedback?
Sorry, John.
No, no, no.
I need to interrupt you. I was just going to say, I
I need to interrupt you. I was just going to say, I don't have any problems with the retail aspect of it. I think it looks really nice. The renderings that have been presented are very nice. So it's definitely something that I think will benefit the town. I, from the beginning, when this was presented, was a little bit hesitant in terms of the condos and office space, because it's not something that you typically see in this town. But, you know, it's kind of grown on me. That's not to say that, you know, people aren't going to be drawn to it. So I honestly don't think I have a problem with it. I mean, you know, I'm sure they've done research in terms of the need for something like that. It's different. It's interesting. But, you know, I think at some point, we welcome change. So I have no problem with that aspect of it that we're talking about, so the retail and the condo office space.
Anyone else? Nick, I'll go first. I may be sure we have the right right-of-way on Cayman. So make sure we have enough right-of-way. So let's, we'll get through. So I was a pain in the butt asking for the connectivity to the north, the future commercial development. I would like to see that as a dedicated roadway, not just a pass-through through parking, or through the parking lot. I think if we do a dedicated roadway to the north, with Bob's suggestion, taking it to the south, maybe that's a flow through, through that area. I don't, I love the idea. I love the commercial. I love the work. I think it's great. I think it's a nice new addition to the community. With four-bedroom apartment or condos, I'm sorry, I didn't mean apartments. Initially, I'm looking at parking. I don't know if that's going to be a concern. You know, maybe these are two people with a couple of kids. I don't know if additional parking would be required based on our ordinance for something like that, because there's no driveway. There's no place to park your car. You got the two-car garage. So my initial concern with a one-house, three-bedroom or three-bedroom is do we have enough parking? But I, that's, I know this is only schematic, and we haven't gotten into the weeds, but just something maybe we need to address. But the commercial, the live-work, I think it's fabulous. I would just like to see more of a dedicated roadway between the retail to the west and maybe the condos to the east, and maybe that connectivity with Bob, some suggestions like that. So.
Again, Brad would have to pipe in here, but if we took the, what I have is the bike path extension, which goes off the cul-de-sac, in reality, if you look at that and you look at our commercial connection to the, to the north, they're practically aligned. So I mean, if you actually created a roadway, at least to connect to the retail, it wouldn't be a formal right-of-way through the commercial development, but you do it like any other retail, you've now come into the.
And I'm not looking for a twelve-foot highway or a twelve-foot lane in each direction. You know, if it's eleven-foot with one-foot curb and gutter, maybe slow it down a little bit, but more of a dedicated, that you're not going through a par- I know it's just shown on schematic. I understand it's a schematic. But instead of it just connectivity to the north, maybe more of a third, a nice boulevard type of, like what you have your entranceway, maybe not, but just more of a better connectivity. But I know we haven't gotten into the weeds, because we'll need to go through the dark sky lights, make sure that all meets our requirements. But I think on this, the commercial, I think, I like the idea, and I would make that recommendation of the town council to move forward with that, with maybe some modification to some of the connectivity points and making sure we have the right right-of-way on Cayman, and maybe we get into further details on, you know, the type of lighting, the dark sky. I would imagine you want all that nice feel for the residents, so. All right.
And maybe it's not right-of-way. Maybe it's ingress, egress easement, you know, something like that. It's dedicated. It's on the plan.
So.
If it's right-of-way, then it's the town's problem. And I don't know if the town, town of St. John would want to maintain that.
But you got more, yeah. Just, I think that keeping that connectivity like that service road type of feel.
Yeah, I just, I just want to mention that we have a, we have a similar thing in Summer Winds and Cedar Lake. Actually, so on the north side of Strack and Ventil, there was always a right-of-way that deadended on the west end of the parking lot. And we actually picked it up there and took it further west and connected through to, you know, what is in front of the funeral home there and behind Burger King, et cetera. So that, that's now a complete, you know, thoroughfare from parish west and then all the way back out to 133rd. So similar kind of concept, yeah.
So I think the direction you're going through with the commercial, live-work, with the board members, I heard now, I think we're acceptable to that, under, you know, why we still have to get to the PUD and all the details. But I think we're moving in the right direction there. Okay. So the next, so, anyone else, Jason, John? If not, we'll move on to the townhome unit. So we have the proposal. Again, I'll open it up to discussion from the board, comments, concerns about that. We appreciate, I appreciate the landscaping, the separation between the R2 and that. I appreciate that. Can you, the, do we have sizes on those?
On the.
Square foot?
Well, the, literally, I do, actually, the, at least the footprint we're portraying, the two-car garage, the first floor footprint is about twelve hundred square feet. Second floor pretty much aligns with the first floor. Again, not finite, but that's a twenty-four hundred square foot townhome, which is pretty above average for at least what we see in, even from a duplex standpoint, which are typically eighteen to twenty-two hundred. So as I said, we're looking at a more upscale target market and demographic. But that's, we're about, average is about twenty-four hundred square feet.
So we'll need all those in architectural details?
Yes.
If, depending on the pleasure of the board, to try to get a better understanding of the exterior. Well, we got that understanding of the exterior. And how many units are there?
Right now, we propose thirty-four. That's an average size. I mean, in reality, you're not going to have exactly, you know, you might have a three-bedroom, a four-bedroom. The width will change a little here and there, but I mean, you know, that's part of the detailed discussion that you alluded to.
And maintenance-free?
Yes.
Questions or comments?
This one's a difficult one for me. I just, I'm not sure if townhomes is the right fit for this area. You know, we got R2 to the east. Yeah, we got commercial to the west. eventual, eventually, commercial to the north. Not sure. I was kind of thinking single-family, but I know townhomes have their place, and I don't know if this one has it, has its place.
Is it a, is it a density issue?
For me, it always is a density issue. I, St. John, people move to St. John, they want, they want elbow room. They want space. I understand baby boomers are retiring. They, you know, they, they want maintenance-free.
As, like I said, the reference point, which we provided in the previous one with the items of similar units and the ones I, because they exist, and there's not many of them. St. John is Lake Hills, and those are twenty-nine-foot units. And they're a mix of two to four units. I think they're more than two. I think they're either three or four units combined. But they're an average of twenty-nine foot in width.
Yeah, me personally, I, if you bring, when you bring that up, I thought that was kind of the worst spot for townhomes in St. John.
That was a long time ago.
That was a long time ago.
But they sold fast, though.
Yeah.
They sold fast.
So Nick, you're proposing a couple with six units. Is there a possibility to reduce those amounts? I mean, is it a reduction? I guess I'll ask a question to the board, and is it just townhomes in, in general? Or is it the number?
Townhomes in general.
Townhomes in general.
Yeah.
Well, if there are four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar townhomes, is that, is that a stumbling block?
Yeah. No, and I understand. There's areas in St. John, south of Bingo Lake, great spot for them, you know? North of Bingo Lake, good spot for them. Other areas, no.
Anybody else would like to comment from the board?
John, this is Yolanda. I just wanted to say that I feel the same way that Bob does. I think that ideally, I agree with him. People do move to St. John for what he says elbow room. I've never heard that, but I love that term, and I will begin to use it. Yes, for elbow room. And townhouses, it's not so much the density, if that's what he was asking earlier. I think it's just the fact that they're townhomes. There is a place for them in St. John. I agree with that too, but just maybe not in this spot. And I know from the prior times that this has been presented, there has been maybe one, at least one other Planning Commission member that has alluded to this as well.
Yes. Okay. Now, I mean, I guess, density doesn't scare me as much. I'm more, you know, I look at the value of the establishment. So the architectural standards that are going to be put in place for this, I think the higher the architectural standards, the more comfortable there is. Maybe a six-unit maybe not be the most appropriate for this area. You got a couple six-units. But again, it's, it sounds like some, it's just a townhome issue. It's not the number. Because I didn't know if it was going to be the number of units that it's causing.
Well, obviously, Greg, you stepped up. I'll let you.
Well, I was just, just going to comment that Nick is doing a great job. I was just, and I appreciate the comments from everyone about the townhomes. But I also heard that townhomes have their place, and I know the Plan Commission understands the unique nature of this parcel. You're tucked up in right by a, what I consider to be a busier and busier intersection. So that pushes this more towards, and obviously, my client's point of view, a townhome development allows him, point-blank, to put the units in. And I've also heard it's not a density issue. But if you look at the plan with how we're tucked up into the C2 area, right by that intersection that gets busier and busier, we do believe it's a good transition from the commercial to the R2 immediately to the east. It provides a transition like that. And there's a lot of green space left on this parcel due to, not our choice. Someone else made the choice to run the electrical lines through there. But that huge transmission, it's still a lot of green space that's left open. And so there are a lot of challenges on this parcel to balance being able to do it economically and get it completed. And I do live, actually, I started in a townhome in St. John in this area, I guess, after I completed my schooling for, and lived there for ten years before I moved. So I started in a townhome in St. John and loved it, my wife and I, but we started having too many kids. But my community right now that I live in has townhomes in it, and has duplexes, and single-family homes, and it is wonderful, and they all thrive, and they're all great. In fact, one of my, a good client who works at, one of my larger clients, just moved to a townhome with his wife, and just because it allows that maintenance-free lifestyle. He's a senior executive in the area and probably one of the largest companies here in the area. So I just, you know, I lived in a townhome at once. I understand your concerns. I respect them. But I think townhomes serve a very important need in every vital community, and they're fantastic in the community I live in right now. So I'll turn it back to your, Nick, and, but I just thought, you know, with the unique positioning of this, I agree with your comments. You just can't stick townhomes somewhere. But with the tucked into the C2 area and the transitioning to R2, we were hoping with all the green area, green space on the parcel left by the transmission lines, that the Plan Commission could see the value in this particular parcel.
What would you develop first? The commercial or the eastern half of the property or the western half?
Yeah, we would start with the eastern half. We'd be looking to, you know, have those residential, you know, lots available. Immediately, we've already targeted, you know, two different, two different builders that are basically, we're going to put the package up there and say, okay, who wants it, you know? That's one, the one thing I did want to mention about the townhomes is that, yes, like Nick said, is, well, yeah, great. It's great for people who, you know, empty nesters, they want to move out of the, the single-family home. They don't want to do the yard work anymore and have a maintenance-free living situation. But, you know, townhomes really have become attractive to, to the younger crowd, too. You know, I mean, folks, it's expensive to live in St. John. I mean, you can't get into a new construction, single-family home in St. John for, for under four hundred thousand dollars. It's not, not going to happen. I, I think these units here, they would top out at four hundred thousand dollars, really. So you would be looking at something between a three and four hundred thousand dollar unit. And as far as, you know, attracting and keeping youth in, in the St. John area, these types of live units are exactly what the millennials and the Gen Z's now, or whatever you want to call them, are looking at. They don't want to be tied down to yard work. And so my daughter, who's getting married in July, is a perfect example. They are a different, a different type than, you know, what we grew up as, wanting that, a single-family home and the, you know, the pool and the grass and everything else. So I just think that the townhouses really, they just offer that complete spectrum from both young to old, and, and also, you know, some decent affordability in St. John to kind of, to help appeal to, to young people, so they're not moving out of town so quickly and looking for, you know, suitable housing elsewhere.
The other, which Greg mentioned, and I sort of blew past, that obviously Greg mentioned the green space. Obviously, we're, we have nothing, you know, we can't control the high-tension line easement, but obviously, that, you know, that's going to be significant green space. I think you also look in the context of the overall development of what we also proposed at the south end of the property, which is because of, it's not developable, to be honest about it, but it is significant green space. You're actually going to have an excess of over two hundred and eighty feet of green space. And we do propose to extend the bike path, and I think the attraction of the mixture of generational people Brad references to, someone who'd want to live here, not only can they jump on the bike path, they can literally walk to their office theoretically in the live-work and then go to the retail and grab a bite to eat or coffee or whatever. I think this is actually, in some aspect, it's almost a total of community from that aspect, too. And part of that is driven with somewhat of a density issue. And so that, you know, I think that could actually make it pretty thriving and pretty exciting from that aspect.
Nick, if you know off the top of your head, what is the depth of the lot sizes on the north side and the west side of the, for the townhomes?
I actually was looking at trying to keep a hundred and fifty-foot lot depth, which is excessive for a multifamily or a townhome or a duplex. I was trying to keep it to a hundred and fifty foot, which is at least, yeah, which is a hundred, I believe it's.
So is it townhomes, townhomes or nothing? Could it be potentially? Because I think my sensitivity would be to all the R2s that are living, and I know zoning changes at the whims of the Plan Commission and the town council. But is it townhomes or nothing? Can something potentially be on the north and the west, I'm sorry, east side, other than townhomes? I'm just trying to figure, I'm the youngest of seven, so I'm always deciding votes.
Again, because of, we've lost so much of the property, I mean, I'll throw it out there, and Brad kicks me in my leg. I'll know. And whether you do zero lot-line individual homes, or whether you do duplexes or villas, I mean, there's a mix of homes that we can definitely entertain. I just have to see what Brad's, if he says, nope, we're not doing that, then that's fine. But I mean, we can, there's, there's, there's some level that, that makes it viable. And could we look at that? Absolutely. And Brad, you willing to do that?
And I'm, just the comments I'm hearing, and I, like Craig said, I respect everyone's comments. There's some concerns with the issues with the townhomes, and we've heard it from a third member. So I just didn't know if there's another option to, so this, I didn't know if it's, there's a line in the sand, and if it's not all townhomes, then this project doesn't go. But I don't know from the board members if another type of residential unit on the, potentially the north, or if they don't want to see any. or if they don't want to see any townhomes. So I don't know that question either. But I'm just, is there a mix of residential that could work both for you and for the concerns that this, the board has? So I'm just, I don't know, I don't know that answer, but you don't know unless you ask. So I'm just throwing it out there and...
I have to defer to Brad's comments.
Yeah, well, if we, obviously, if we could get approval to move to the next level, it would be certainly something we'd investigate and spend the money to present to the town. I just, I'm wondering, you know, really what the attractiveness would be of something that is, that is mixed, that is mixed like that. You know, guys, we give it a whirl and take a look. He's the creative mastermind for sure here.
Again, I'm just throwing out suggestions, ideas. If the other board members feel comfortable, if they don't, they don't. If they say no, they don't want to see any townhomes, then that might, I'm just, if there's other options.
The single-family option in this small area, I mean, it's just going to, truthfully, we're right, we're trying to use, we're going to be trying to use the residential portion. Of course, we can get that up and going to help fund, you know, the commercial portion. So we're not carrying such a debt load on the entire project for, and get eaten alive by the interest. So we're looking to, you know, make any deal we can possibly make that would be economically feasible for the development, yeah.
For this townhome area, I like, I would also like to see access from the townhome area to the retail. Because I think it serves a lot of area to the east and north that could, instead of going out on 101st Caymette, they could possibly cut through here.
Oh, you're talking about another roadway access?
Yeah, another access. You know, that, if it comes in from the south, or maybe you push the detention pond and it comes in on the north property line, or, you know, however you can.
It's truthfully, a lot of that, I mean, we did not want to show, and I'm sure Nick can back this up, that we didn't want to show in this drawing that we were just, you know, willy-nilly plowing out onto that easement without really having, you know, really knowing whether we can do that or not. We've had discussions with Doug regarding that and success of that in the past. And Doug's mentioned that they were able to do that in Maryville, I think.
It was a little challenging.
To have a, to have a road on the easement?
Yeah.
We actually just parking lot, they gave us...
Yeah, and that's why I suggest should maybe have something on the north, your north end of your property, have something, access there.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Get along there, got it. Yeah, certainly.
Nick, I think from what I'm hearing tonight, everything west of the detention pond is favorable by the board, understanding their concern with townhomes. I don't know what other option is viable for you guys. I don't know if that got you to, you know, a comfort level where you could move, think about moving forward, or ideas, suggestions, recommendations? I mean, is a board comfortable with half, I mean, I'm just, is there another option than other single-family homes? I don't think single-family homes would benefit, you know, financially, but I don't know.
The, well, the R1, I mean, if I just said, okay, R1, I'd probably get six or eight lots in there. And from the infrastructure improvements, et cetera, the viability is like, it's not there. So if I go to R2, obviously, as you go up a little better, if the Plan Commission's open to look at different residential options in there, whether it be, like I said, zero-lot line, duplexes, or whatever, that's just something we'd have to look and see if there's some scenarios we can come up with that might be more palatable to the Plan Commission.
And like I said, I'm on the fence with the townhomes. You know, I wouldn't want to see it put in residential lots that are 60-foot wide. I just, you know, in cookie-cutter house, boom, 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 boom.
I'm not a fan of...
It seemed like it'd be worse.
And John, to be fair to, you know, Bob just said he's on the fence, right? So Bob is only one person, I'm just another person. And I think there's somebody else that has alluded to this, but there's other members, too. So I mean, this could potentially pass as is, right?
Oh, it absolutely could. I think, Yolanda, the point I'm just trying to get to is, not that we're making a decision, just that, you know, should they proceed forward with any other first consideration? You're absolutely right, it's a majority vote, and we're only making a recommendation. It still goes to the Town Council, and they could do, they could go with or against our recommendation. But I just think, you know, at this point, it's a third study session. I just think they needed a, maybe we should give them, at this time, some sort of comfort level, how to proceed forward. If this isn't going to go forward with a recommendation from the Plan Commission, then, all right, let's come up with maybe another solution. That's the point I was just trying to get to today. You're absolutely right, it's, there's seven members, it takes four, but I just think they just needed some sort of comfort level to how to proceed and getting some understanding from the board members.
And thank you for that. We really appreciate that, because that person over there, Brad, has to spend the money. And it increases every time. So he wants a comfort level, certainly from you. And so we really appreciate the heart with which you approached that with.
And we all want the comfort level, us as board members and the developer and everyone else. And the neighboring residents, they want the comfort level also.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, I, it's been a great dialogue from my perspective, listening to everyone talk. It sounds like there's some open, well, I won't ever accuse anyone of having a closed mind, but it sounds like the minds are open with respect to these concepts. And I think, they'll go back to the drawing board and everything else, but I think we can possibly take a step forward and show some better renderings and show you what we're really going to do out there to satisfy the R2 people. They know that's going to be a challenge, they're going to get the notices, flat out, they're going to be in here. We're probably going to reach out to them and talk to them ahead of time to try and make sure that we have the best type of discussion we possibly can here. But I think we could put a foot forward with some drawings and show some things here that I think will actually help you a little bit, so, and coming to your decision. Thank you.
I appreciate that. All right, any other questions or comments? And Yolanda said it right, we're all just, A, individual members giving you our opinions, and there's other members that are not here. You know, I'm always, you know, I'm not as concerned about density. I'm always concerned about value and the quality, the architectural standards. I think this live and work is awesome. I think that's going to be a gem for St. John, it's going to be unique. And, but I think that same uniqueness and that home and work needs to be also portrayed in those townhomes. That, how do we make those unique that, you know, it's just not a, not saying it's a cookie-cutter, but let's make those just as unique as that home and life. And I think that, in my perspective, would be a nice... And then the connectivity Bob and I brought up. I would like to see some sort of, maybe additional connectivity to the north. And Bob brought up a great point about those neighbors to the east. So that's a good point. All right. Any other comments, questions? Councilman, do you have anything to say? Because this ultimately will come in your lap, so...
Ultimately, it's your recommendation.
Well, it's our recommendation, but, yes. Putting you on the hot seat, buddy, putting you on the hot seat.
And I ducked it real well.
Yeah, you did, you sure did. So, anything else we could do?
Is there, other than, obviously consulting with my client, you know, in terms of the process, we'd like to, you know, this was very positive, at least. We got some feedback that we can work with, I believe. The question I have is, would there be, and I'll actually direct it to Sergio, whether we can come in and sit down with some of those potential options before the next Plan Commission study session? Or how, if there's an opportunity to, lack of a better term, run something up the flagpole or just...
I'm here. Coordinate something, yeah.
Awesome.
I think just in terms of at least getting, you know, just say, no way, no how, or, you know, get some feedback, you know, and then we can, might have a little more direction when we peer back in front of you again.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, item number C, Astoria, proposed subdivision for 101 single-family lots. Michael?
Yes, sir.
All right, just do me a favor, if you just introduce yourself at the podium for the record, please. Guess I missed the first couple.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Hello, my name is Michael Herbers with Diamond Peak Homes. With me, I have Mark Anderson with Anderson and Anderson, along with Doug Reddick with DVG. We were in front of you guys one month ago, back in April, and presenting our Astoria development. We listened to what you guys had to say and have come back with some changes to our development. One of the topics was that the main thoroughfare, I guess you would call it, in the development, that long road. You know, I know there was safety concerns there, so we have no issues, obviously, putting a four-way stop at that first intersection and then sporadic stop signs throughout the development, or speed bumps, whichever the town would prefer. Another topic was the landscape buffer to the north. I believe to the south, we are okay with the overhead power line easement. However, to the south, we still plan on providing berms and landscape pods. As you can see, those pods would consist of different trees, shrubs, mulch beds, again, sporadic on either side of that bike path. To the north, we would anticipate doing the same. On a smaller scale, we would provide landscape pods on each individual lot. Again, those pods would consist of trees, shrubs, bushes, and landscape, or in mulch beds. Originally, we talked about lining it with trees. However, we feel as though, you know, providing these landscape pods would provide a better buffer and be more aesthetically pleasing to the eye. Another topic of discussion were the 70-foot-wide lots, which again, as St. John Commons presented, this piece provides a lot of hardships. Both the pipeline easement, along with that overhead power line easement. It's, the one key thing is that it almost comes to a pinch point right along Parish Avenue. Now, if these easements were exactly perpendicular, it would be a little easier to work with this development. However, the fact that the pipeline is at an angle, it does provide, again, those hardships there. So we feel as though with that R3 zoning to the south, the R2 zoning to the north and east, coming in for a PUD would make this development economically work for all parties. Now, obviously, as John Kennedy has mentioned, he sees more value, and of course, the value of the home versus the size. And of course, our homes, we do provide, as I provided you guys a summary of our covenants, just stating what each one of our homes will be required to have. On top of that, we do, again, with all of the landscaping in the development, the park, the bike path, we do feel as though we can meet a lot of the town's requirements, with the exception of the lot with this difficult piece is presenting us. So again, we're back in front of the board for consideration for this PUD. Definitely open to hear everyone's comments, concerns, and thought process in regard to this development.
Thank you, Michael. One day, we're going to get a site that has no issues. It's going to be rectangle, there's going to be no easements on it. It's going to have a natural stream down the middle with trout all day long. One of those days, we're going to get that.
No trees, no bushes.
Yeah, it's going to be flat, drains perfectly, it's going to be, no, I'm sorry.
Xanadu.
Xanadu, so, all right. Questions, comments for the board? Again, this is another PUD. It is the board's responsibility to make sure we are, someone used that last time, tie in the hands of the developer to make sure they're providing the best quality and product for the town. And so, again, we're going to, I'm not saying pick this apart, we're going to review this and comment and give our recommendations and suggestions so they can take it to the next step. So, again, this is, would again be Plan Commission recommendation, and we're going to put Councilman Blazek on the seat again, because it ultimately goes to him and his fellow colleagues. So with that, I'll turn over the board with any comments, questions?
Bless you. I'm going to jump in, you probably heard me on the, to the last presenter.
You're going to talk about the lots, yeah.
Lot with, I just, Jack knows that, you know, lot with, I'm concerned. You know, like I said, people move to St. John, they want elbow room. They don't want to live in northern Lake County where the lots are 50, 60, 70-foot wide. And I like to see 100-foot lots, maybe minimum 90-foot lots and 70-foot. With the type of homes that are going in in St. John, four, $500,000 homes, you know, you could kiss your neighbor out the window. I just, I, when I see that, I just, I turn my head and I don't even want to look at it. That's all I have for the lot with.
So how do you feel about that?
I'm married, so I'm not going to kiss my neighbor.
Yeah, I feel like it's my neighbor. What would your sideyard requirements be on a 70-foot lot? I don't see that in here. Eight-foot? And the depth of these lots are?
They're all 150 or more.
150 or more.
This is Mark Anderson. What Michael is submitting there is immediately to the south of the project site here, and you can see different lot widths there from the GIS, you know, ranging in 62 feet, 65 feet. That's immediately to the south of the development there. So it'd be in line, and actually, the 70-foot lots would be larger than several of the widths in that gates of St. John section right there, right next to this development.
This would be, is this, oh, I see it, yeah, West 103rd Street, okay.
But you drive through there, some of those lots look really small. I mean, really small.
And I wasn't on the board at that time, so I can't help what happened.
You can, you can drive through there and look, and you're like, eh.
We're not saying that's small, but we're saying that the 70 feet is not the 62 that you're seeing there and 60 feet that's there. But it is in that immediate area, those size lots.
John, we're having a hard time hearing the speaker.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Yolanda. Do you need him to repeat? Can you just repeat what you just said, sir? And can you, and can you...
Yes, I'm Mark Anderson of Anderson and Anderson. And so what we were talking about, and we passed out, was the, a section of the lots that are immediately to the south of the subject parcel, in the gates of St. John. And they had various lot widths of anywhere, and they were varying. I don't have it right in front of me right now, anywhere from like 60, 62 feet, 65 feet, several lots just on the south side of that high-tension easement. So we're just talking about how it is similar to what is in that immediate area, is what we're talking about here. Larger than the 62 or 60-feet sizes, but similar, I guess, to what's already in that immediate area.
Michael? Michael, question. The, I'm just, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm just looking, reading through this now. Do you have unit size minimums for the houses?
Yes, we will put in a place minimums. We're anticipating an average of 24 to 2500 square feet for a two-story. Of course, that will peak 3,000 feet due to some of our floor plans, and then our ranch models, those vary between right around 2,000 square feet to 2,200 square feet.
So, you are exceeding our current standards?
Correct.
And then I would imagine a one and a half will be somewhere over 2,200 in that area?
Yep, right in that area, yes, sir.
What's unique about this board, we have different philosophies. Why, Bob is lot size, I am unit size, and we work together very well. So, we, so as you've heard this for the third time, I'm not as concerned about density, which others I respect, I'm more worried about unit size. So, I just want to make sure that's clear. And then, architecturally, 25% stone on face, excluding dormers, other exception upon architectural review. What does they call that, when they wrap the brick around the side of the house? They do like a?
Like a stone, stone return.
Yeah, stone return.
Yep, each home will have a two-foot stone return.
They will have a stone return.
Yes, sir.
What is that, again?
So, you see some homes, they have just the brick facade, but then, they don't, the side is just siding, it's a brick return, so they put a footing, and they put brick along the side. Because what we're seeing is 25% less, potentially, you know, they put some wood siding, which is, which is artistically nice, but it's really not 25% brick. So, maybe if we do a brick return, even though they don't do a full brick front, the return, it's just a couple of feet, what is it, two, three feet?
Yeah, two, three feet. It looks more natural, as opposed to just the stone stopping.
And then it wraps around, so if you're driving, it looks like the brick continues to the side, but then it picks up. Come to my house, I'll take a picture. I got a brick return, but then it's siding along the side.
And of course, this development would be 100% LP, smart siding, no vinyl would be allowed on these homes.
So, eight-foot side yard, what would be front and rear setbacks?
Thirty and thirty.
Thirty and thirty. Okay. Well, Mike, I think we got to get to the 70-foot. I, I, Yolanda, I don't want to put you on the spot, or John on the spot, but, I mean, should he continue with 70, or is that Bob has made himself clear, and I don't know with the 70-foot, if it's feasible for the rest of the committee to, for him to proceed, or if he should consider potentially enlarging, or you still need to digest it?
Well, I mean, I think I, I'd like to see what some of the plans look like on the lots, because, I mean, you know, that, that's where I feel like there's, there's a compromise between the Lot width and the unit. You know, if you do 100-foot wide lot with a 50-foot wide house on it, and you got 25 feet of grass on each side of your house before the Lot line, and then the neighbors the same way, then you got 50 feet house to house, and I think, I think you can almost make a lot too wide, where, you know, when there's, you know, and then you're driving through, and it almost looks like there's an empty lot in between each house that hasn't been built on yet. So, I mean, I think, for me, you know, I, I think I kind of, and more towards your side, John, where I, I look at what's going on in the lot. Is it going to have, you know, brick returns, 100% brick front, you know, more so than how many blades of grass there are to cut. But, I mean, I think if, if we are going to deviate from the, the 100-foot lots, I think, you know, seeing what it would look like, you know, with the green space in between the houses and stuff, to, to find that balance, I think would be what I would like to see.
That's a great point, John, because I understand some of the hardships, it seems like everyone's having hardships, but 70, to me, initially sounds pretty small. Well, you know, at what time does it not seem small enough for me? But I think viewing it, would you guys be able to provide us that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can put some homes on the lots, get some renderings drawn up, to show what they would look like on the lots next door to each other, along the rows, all, all that kind of stuff.
Typically, in St. John, I mean, builders build a nice home. They don't put up shacks.
Yeah.
So, I, it's usually, it's not an issue of someone not putting up a nice home, with the stone, or the brick, or combination, you know, the siding, and roof pitch, and...
And that's all what we can, you know, architectural, you know, we can, you know, there's no, you know, uniformal house look, they all have to have maybe different setbacks, and we can talk about that. But are, are these custom-built homes, or are these out of, I'm not saying catalog, but do you have just, okay, this is our ranch, and you've picked the inside, and maybe some amenities, is it?
So, so we like to call them semi-custom, if you will. So, we do have floor plans to choose from, but we actually are in the process of finishing our design center, in our, at our main office in Crown Point, where homeowners will come in, and they will, you know, pretty much pick their home from, you know, point A to point Z.
Okay. And Doug, did you do a breakdown, if this was, if you didn't have all these easements, and this was our one, how many lots you could put on it? Did you tell us that?
Do we think for just a second, how big is this?
Uh, 70 acres.
70 acres. If it was, our two, and no easements, you'd be about 130, I think we were getting 130 lots. Basically, 1.6 units per acre is typical for our people this time.
How many 100?
1.6 units per acre is a typical R2 density.
So, you?
Seventy and 1.6.
And how many lots you have on here now?
Hundred and one.
Over 100.
1.6 is 112. So, we're, we're real close to that R2 density.
But this wouldn't be considered our, this wouldn't be, would it be an R2, this be an R?
It's just a?
PUD?
PUD.
It's R2, it's R2 PUD.
Do we know if it's R2, sir? I mean, not, no, just, I'm just trying to think about the, the, so if you're talking 70 by 150, you're talking about a 10,000-square-foot lot, right? Am I doing that right, the math?
Pretty close.
10,500, so that would?
Versus 15,000 in R2.
And R3, well, R3 is this multi-unit, so, okay. And how would you handle lot, I'm just looking at this Lot 24? That, that is a unique lot.
That very first lot in the development?
Yep. I don't know how you would get a side yard.
What's the side yard? What's the rear yard?
Oh, yeah, that's, we had that discussion, that's right. Yeah. And like 84, where we'd run into that, say, well, no, well, maybe, that's a little bit bigger.
There's a couple tricky ones, because of the angle of that pipeline, it's, it's, it's a tough site, that's what we're talking about. But they have, they also have a couple smaller plans, that sometimes you got to work with a smaller plan, too.
And Michael, do you have another location that I could Google Earth, that is similar 70-foot with those homes that you're providing, that I could look at?
Yes. Down in Ledgestone, in Cedar Lake, those are 70-foot wide lots.
Where's that at, Ledgestone?
It's?
About 145th and Parish?
Mm-hmm.
145th and Parish.
How about latitude, do we get 70-foot lot, latitude?
Yeah, latitude out in Winfield, those are 70-foot wide lots as well, right at just, or just west of Randolph on 117th.
Let me point out, at Latitude, there's two different products, two different builders in there. So, there's some 60-foot lots, which is not their product, there, and then on the north side of Latitude, there are, I think, 70-foot lots on the north side. And also look at Morning Crest here in St. John, where they're, John and Ryan Lance developed Morning Crest, as you all remember, but they're the builder in Morning Crest, and they're putting their homes, that the homes that they want to build here, they're building Morning Crest on 100-foot lots, and it's what we talked about, there's a lot of green space between them, and it doesn't look quite so friendly. Too much space, and that's what they're trying to scale down a little bit.
Doug, Michael, on lots three through 12, are the lots north of that in, I don't know what subdivision that is?
Yes.
I think they're being developed as we speak.
And are those 100-foot, it's just, I guess one of my pet peeves is, you're going to have multiple homes, if there's a way to three through 12, or 13, could be, I understand you got the cul-de-sac, but you're having multiple homes. It'd just be nice to tie in together, the lots from the north, somehow.
Is that the Suncrest?
Yes, it is.
Edition there? The reason those lots are so wide is because they couldn't get the depth.
Right, they had a depth.
Are they more than 100? Oh, are they?
Made them wider.
Okay.
They had to make them wider to make up the square footage.
Thank you. Well, Michael, I guess what we'll need, need to do now is visually look at what a 70-foot lot looks like with these homes you're proposing, and then that might give us a little bit additional direction on, you know, 70, it sounds small, so, but again, I'm not that sensitive to density, but let's see what that looks like, and then that might help us make our decision.
Okay.
Uh, the wraparound, I'm in favor of that, I don't know if you guys are in favor of that, but I think it helps with the 25%, you know, then they could put maybe a dormer or something else other than brick, but the brick then wraps around for additional, gives you that 25.
Doesn't look like?
And who's architectural review? I love asking that question.
The developer would be handling that.
Okay, and these covenants last for how long, until the development?
Until it's handed over to the, the homeowners, which typically about 80 to 90% residents closed on homes is when they would hand it over.
Okay, and then we got eight-foot sidewalks on Parish. Do we know if we have the, have to make sure we got the right, right-of-way?
I was just going to ask about that.
Because you're hearing what's going on on Parish, so, and will we just, I try to be, I know every application is unique, but we try to, I, I try to be uniform in our approach, if we're seeking another developer for that right-of-way, something we would like you to consider as well.
It looks like you matched up the right-of-way at 103rd and the south end, but it doesn't match up on the north end with the Suncrest addition. At least, it looks like there's a jog in the right-of-way here.
There's something going on with the section lines there, it's a section corner, Ken?
Yeah.
It could be kind of a survey thing there, too, we'll look into that, but, because there's, there's a offset in the two section lines there, but you don't really see it until you look at it on paper, but we could look at that, too.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? And then who will maintain, I mean, that easement, the HOA maintains?
Yes, sir.
So, you got a path, you got the nine-foot, eight-foot path on Parish. Did you say a bike?
Yeah, that bike path will be roughly a 10-foot wide asphalt path.
And that runs along the, where's that at on this drawing?
On the south.
Oh, there it is, I got you.
Outside.
Does that bike path tie into anything on the east side?
On the east side, I do not believe that path is in. Of course, we're, we're looking to the future, too, that eventually that would be tapped into. Of course, by the time we get there, that path could be there, so we would be connecting to that path.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last but not least, I understand they are online. We have Tractor Supply Company looking for a site plan to expand their existing commercial use. Beth, are you online?
Uh, no, actually Dwight McKinney, Construction Manager for Tractor Supply, and Aaron Blue, our architect, are both online here today.
Well, thank you, and appreciate your patience, it's been a long meeting, so, thank you.
It's okay, I took a nap.
I envy that guy.
Yeah, nearby, you're, welcome back, yes. All right, the floor is yours.
We're not expanding the site here, any, actually, we're just going to put a greenhouse right on the edge of the building, right where your arrow is. So, it'll go from the front of that existing side lot, it's only going to be 26 feet wide, but it will be 96 feet long. The roof will be a white polycarbonate translucent roof, the sides, the corners of the sides will be a clear polycarbonate, and then we will have roll-up curtains that can go up when the weather's nice, or down when it gets cold. There will be a couple heaters in there, and we will be selling live plants, and all the things that help us keep our live plants alive once they're in the ground.
This is on the south side of the building?
Yeah, so it's on the south side. What you're looking at right there is what we call our fenced outdoor display area, or side yard, and we will not be increasing the size of that, it'll stay the same size it is, we're just going to put a greenhouse within that footprint.
Have you done this at another one of your locations?
Oh, we've done lots of them already. We've got quite a number we're trying to get done this year.
Can you just give me, uh, just so I could look online, to see what it looks, I mean, I would imagine the same material. It's the same material across the board, that you use at all your sites?
Yeah. Aaron, do you have, do we have a complete one that we could give them a location on? None of mine are actually complete yet. That's what I get for being the guy who's in the north. We just started construction.
No, I get you, I get you. Just to give us a look.
I don't know that, any of the ones that we've done to date, I'm not sure if there's really any satellite images of them yet. I, I do have some, some photos and a photo package that I can pull up, if you'd like me to share that, share that with you guys.
Sure, anybody else has?
Give me just one second here, and let me get into my folder.
Where do you drain to? You just connect to your existing downspouts?
Um, the existing downspouts are in the back. I think the greenhouse design is to actually let, let off the surface of the existing outdoor display area.
Okay. This might be one of the easier one today, we should have had you go first.
Yeah.
Well, I was joking with Aaron about that by a text, in one of the other ones, I said the guys who are going to take five minutes are at the end.
Yeah. Well, very good. Why don't you just share those with Sergio, and then he could pass it to the board, if you can't pull it up now, just so we have an understanding. I remember when Alcips, remember Alcips? Were you on the board when Alcips did their, their facility? Oh, man, we made them their facade, their building, and so I just want to make sure we're, all right.
Is that wrong, Georgia, Aaron?
He wanted brick on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, guys, the facades, the, the canopies that you see on the right side here will not be included in this particular project, and also, it, that's a double gable wide there, we will only have a single gable on ours. It's, you know, very narrow.
Oh, we lost him.
Someone pulled the cord.
He's gone.
He's gone. All right, well, that was an easy one. Any questions or comments for the board?
No.
Basically, we're just going to put a, a shell up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Greenhouse.
Greenhouse.
Exactly.
Awesome. All right.
Plumbing, they probably will have, will be like water lines to?
To feed the plant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's probably no drains. I, I don't have any problem with this at all.
Awesome, that's what I liked to hear. All right, everyone else good?
Yep.